For town council to order, for the public who have tuned in, we're now in council chambers after many, many months of having to meet virtually. So I want to thank council for pivoting, enrolling with all the changes and staff who did the same. I'm super proud of our whole organization and how we adapted very quickly. We didn't have to postpone any meetings, any agenda items. We didn't, nothing kind of came off the rails. So that's a testament to Tammy and her team and how well they were able to adapt and Pat and being able to set this all up and council for being available. And I'm grateful to live in a community that has strong internet because I think we all managed well. So thank you for that. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, we will declare the agenda as passed. Under announcements, we have a proclamation. So proclamations will be found on the town website, but September is Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorder Awareness Month and September 9th is the day to recognize that. Are there any other announcements from members of council? There's a lot happening still, but things are ramping up. Okay. And we are open to the public. So just a reminder to the public that you do have to let us know in advance. You have to register to come visit. We have to make sure that we do not exceed our capacity or our ability to have safe physical distancing. But we are able to have the public at our meetings, which is very important to our organization. So there are no public delegations here today. The minutes of July 13th, 2020, regular council meeting, any errors or omissions, anything missing from that? Hearing none, we will deem the July 13th minutes as approved and go down to planning items. So I will call the, oh, the echo might be a bit much. I'm going to call the public hearing to order and just note that all the statutory requirements have been met. And we're going to do, this is kind of our first go at a hybrid in-person virtual meeting. So I'm going to turn this over to our director of community development to lead us off.
Thank you. We're going to see how this works. We have the applicant on the line. So this is a public hearing for 42 Riverview Drive rezoning from R1, single unit dwelling to R2, two-unit dwelling. And our applicant Chad is in the team's meeting and I am now going to attempt to share my screen so that we can do the presentation without doing too many gymnastics. Okay. So staff received an application to rezone from single unit, R1, to two-unit residential, R2, in March of this year. And to make that rezoning happen requires a map amendment to the zoning map of the land use bylaw. The property owners are looking to convert the existing basement into a second dwelling unit. The zoning of the property is single unit residential, as shown on this map in gray, and the surrounding zoning consists of single unit residential, two-unit residential, special commercial, and with comprehensive residential land nearby. The surrounding land uses are single and two-unit dwellings with an automotive shop and undeveloped land. The future land use map, which is a policy of council, shows the subject property and the surrounding area designated as low-density residential with comprehensive residential and open space nearby. And the low-density residential designation in the municipal planning strategy supports rezoning from single unit to two-unit residential, R1 to R2, as this land designation is reserved for those two zoning types. The rezoning is required because the R1 zone doesn't permit two-unit dwellings unless it's through a residential conversion. However, conversion is only for buildings that were constructed prior to August 27th, 1975, which is the date of the original land use bylaw. And a building permit was issued for this particular residence in 1991. So on this chart, it shows the comparison of what's permitted as of right, permitted with conditions, and permitted by development agreement for both zones, the R1 and the R2. So you can see slight difference highlighted in yellow. So in the R2 zone, as of right, two-unit dwellings are permitted, as well as residential conversions up to three units compared to the current zoning of R1, which only allows single unit dwellings as of right and permits the conversion up to two units. So by rezoning this to R2 would enable the two-unit dwelling as of right and conversion, which doesn't apply to this building because it was not built prior to August 27th, 1975. A public participation meeting was held virtually on June 24th, and zero members of the public attended, and there were zero comments provided online. And there were no other emails received through the development applications webpage as a result of the advertisement or our webpage that we now have that shows the progress of all development applications. So a review of the policy was conducted. In order to consider the application for rezoning, staff reviewed the various policies of the municipal planning strategy, which include policies for residential development. So in summary, the property is located in the low-density residential designation of the future land use map, which is reserved for a single and two-unit development. Single and two-unit dwellings are viewed as compatible and comparable with each other, and a two-unit dwelling provides a different housing option in a predominantly single unit neighborhood. Review also included policy IM6 of the municipal planning strategy, which is the implementation policy that sets out about 12 different criteria that we assess all applications through. Most of the policy was met, meaning it's compatible with the surrounding land use. However, based on the 2018 sanitary stormwater master plan, new developments in town are not permitted to increase the frequency or volume of overflows of the wastewater system. Therefore, offsetting flows or offsetting measures would be necessary to support the development based on the addition of the unit. The road network is adequate to support the requested change. There are no known environmental contamination or constraints on the property, and any costs associated with the necessary changes will be borne by the applicant. So overall, the proposed development is supported in the planning strategy and all other bylaws and regulations. So the area that hasn't been met against the IM6 include the adequacy of sanitary services and stormwater, well, the adequacy of sanitary services and the financial ability of the town to absorb any of the costs. So an approach recommended upon review by the engineering department was to address the gap in meeting those policies, such as setting adequate tax rate or other associated rates, wastewater fees to cover operating replacement costs, sort of the larger policy option that doesn't exist. We did a, we had an application for a similar type of request amendment, if you recall, earlier this spring, R1 to R2. And upon that review, it was indicated by our solicitor that we have a legal gap. We can't, without a development agreement or some other agreement mechanism, require an offsetting measure when considering a rezoning. So that legislative gap needs to be addressed through other policy changes or things. So, but this property at this level of a single unit could be, council has the ability to consider this, and therefore can consider the land use bylaw amendment, having reviewed all of the information and analysis provided by staff. So staff do recommend that town council for town of Bridgewater give second and final, second and final consideration of the proposed map amendment to the land use bylaw to rezone 42 Riverview Drive from single unit residential to two-unit residential, as contained in appendix A.
Okay. Thank you. Did anyone have any questions before we move on to the applicant? And this is our second, Councilor Thorburn?
Yeah, I just wonder, this is a second lot on that street that's going to residential two. And I was just wondering if maybe instead of keep coming back here all the time where it's one street and we know how many lots is here, we just change them all and then that way we wouldn't have to keep coming back. Because the next lot wants to do it, we got to go through the same process again. We have an R2 there now and we have an R3. So just for simplicity sake, just a question.
Yeah, I don't know if that is something that we can do or if it's...
That is a much larger process, and I would recommend that we consider that under review of the planning documents. To rezone the entire street would be a larger, we didn't have a public meeting about that concept, and we have not had public discussion around that. So for those other landowners to suddenly find themselves having an R2 lot would come as a surprise. But I think it's an important conversation to have around the, you know, the R1 zone and, you know, allowing residential conversions and that sort of thing. That's a larger housing conversation, I would say, though. So I would suggest, at this point, we can't consider it. That's not what's in front of council. That would have to come back as a different application or as part of a review process.
So something to think about when we go down that road for the review, yeah?
That's why I raised it. We can't do anything tonight, but maybe the next time we may be able to look a little better into the future.
And our waste, sorry, just to add one more element to that, our wastewater issues really need to be considered if we're looking at, you know, sort of rezoning an entire section of town. And I'm pretty sure Audrey and Larry here with me tonight would have some comments on that.
Other questions? Does the applicant wish to speak? Is Chad, right? Chad, are you there? Oops, Chad, are you there?
Yes, I am here.
Did you, did you wish to say a few words or add any comment?
No, no. Like you said, it's just a rezoning application. I appreciate you bringing it to the table and considering it. So yeah, I appreciate your time.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. There are no members of the public here to address this. Any other questions from council? It's pretty straightforward. I don't have any closing remarks myself. What is the will of council? Detective Mayor Tanner?
I'm with the town council. The town of Bridgewater gives second and final consideration to the proposed map amendment to the land use bylaw to rezone 42 Riverview Drive from single unit residential R1 to two-unit residential R2, as contained in appendix A of document 20-1, 0 through B.
Wanted to thank, seconded by Councilor Fager for their discussion. Question being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. It's nice to just see motion with hands and not have to go around. I almost did. I almost said, "Councilor McGinnis." I'm so glad not to do that anymore. That probably added 100% of the time to our meetings. That will now close off the public hearing. And thank you very much to the applicant and to our director for that presentation. We're going to go down to correspondence for action. We've got a letter from Glenn Carey regarding parking permits and a request to allow permitted permits to be used in metered parking spaces. So right now, if you have a parking permit, you park in spaces that are designated for permit holders. We don't generally allow those permit holders to then park at meters, and those permits are not for a specific location. So right now, you could have all the permit holders that are set for a certain area, like for non-metered spaces, all parking and all the parking meters. So I think the recommended motion is to refer to the upcoming parking study, but that's a discussion for council to have. What does council wish to do with that? We can put the motion on the floor and discuss it, or Councilor Graves?
I'm with the town council for the town of Bridgewater. We refer the request contained in document 20-134 to allow permit parking at metered parking spots. Just staff for inclusion in the upcoming parking study.
Perfect. Thank you. Seconded by Councilor McGinnis. Any discussion on that?
Question.
Questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. So that'll be in the study that's slated for next year, next year, yeah. The next item is from Frank Dunham, Dominion Street excavation and sodding. So there was, there's some correspondence here from Mr. Dunham about concerns after some work was done. And I know that our director of engineering is here as well to answer questions. Sorry, Larry, sorry on the spot. So his letters there regarding the subside of Dominion Street from Forest Hills down to below Dawson and some concerns. So and Councilor Graves, I think you've had the most communication probably with Mr. Dunham.
Yeah, so I've talked to Mr. Dunham, and he's obviously concerned. I think if you were to drive down Dominion, it's quite evident that there is an issue with the, with the grass. It's like San Andreas faulted. For me, it's very visible. This has been going on now for, I think, four or five years. Been a long time. There has been some communication. There has been some, some of the counselors have been there. I've been there. I believe that engineering may have taken a, taken a look at it as well. But it's still an issue for Mr. Dunham, and it's still an issue for the neighbors in his, in his community. They would have liked to have been here, but because of the pandemic, they didn't.
I think Mr. Feener can probably add a little bit from the engineering side because I, I know you've communicated with them as well.
Yeah, we have been in touch with them, I guess, on a couple of occasions over the years. I think it started probably around 2012, 2013, when there was some capital works done, and that was done by a contractor. There's a process for that. You know, there's warranty periods of one year. We did go in, the town did go in, I think, the year after, did a little bit of touch-up work as a result of some settlement. And then around 2015, I think, was another capital works project, again, with a maintenance, a one-year maintenance period to that. There is, I guess, some expectation for homeowners to maintain the grass up to the curb. And we do have a policy for, you know, maintenance of green areas up to curves. And we try to reach out to homeowners when we are doing construction projects, encourage them, especially in the, I guess, at the beginning, to try and get the grass to take. The, you know, topsoil, solid seed, there's specifications for all of that, you know, for the contractors that they have to meet when they're doing the work.
Questions, yeah?
As I say, the, there is a definite line. You can certainly see the difference between the property maintained by the homeowners, and there are many homeowners, and then the work where the town, and then the grass where the town had done its work. There is a definite line or the division. So, you know, I think the homeowners are maintaining the lawns properly, but I just don't think that the quality of the material used was good enough. You know, if you look at other parts of Dominion Street further down the newer construction, it looks fine. Everything is fine. But this particular section, there is an issue.
Councilor Thorburn, sorry.
Yeah, I kind of agree with Michael to a certain degree, but most of the lawns around our street are no different than the lawns that's in front of his house. We really can't do much to control weeds and whatnot like we used to be able to. And, but Larry, is that loom and stuff deep enough? Because in his letter, he was saying that there was only a lot of crushed rock and stuff and a very small layer of loom that, which would allow for the grass to grow properly. Does that, does that meet the standards?
Again, we ask for certain depths. I think it's four inches of loom, and, you know, depending on how often inspections are done and how particular contractors are, they vary, that's, you know, that, that does happen. But it's, it's, you know, years ago, we were challenged getting, I'll say, higher quality topsoil. It had to be imported, costs were higher. But over the years, we've been doing tests, a lot of tests on and Rome for stuff that we have been bringing in as well, I guess, seeking the best quality that we can find. And we do periodic tests as well. But it would be, the thickness would vary, and by no means is it always exactly what the specification says.
I just know, continue on, that up by Gazway, that was done a year or so ago, there's nothing there but mud. It's very poor up by their new driveway. And the same thing.
Just wondering, how many properties are we talking about when, on Dominion Street?
Maybe six or seven.
Six or seven.
And this is something from 2012, 2011, 2012?
Yeah, the first construction started, it was either 2012, 2013. And then there was other projects over the years, but I think the last significant work was in around 2015.
And I sympathize with Mr. Dunham because I had, he had worked down on Empire Street many, many years ago, and they seeded on the boulevard in front of my house. And I did my best, but it didn't, it partially took. But to me, that was just a combination of, like it's, I could have put the grass seed down, I probably wouldn't have done any better. I watered it as best I could, and it was a hot year, I remember that. So I'm struggling with, you know, fast forward five or six or seven years, and the, and the door that that opens to every project that we've done and who watered, who didn't water, and, and, I mean, yeah. Councilor McGinnis?
Well, to me, this looks like a reasonably unique situation. I'd never seen anything like this. And I've grown a lot of grass in my time. Smoked a little bit, too. Just joking. No, but it is a unique situation, and it's clearly defined. And now, has Mr. Dunham tried to, tried to rebuild himself? Has he reseeded it or?
I haven't noticed any additional work, I guess, but that's not to say he hasn't.
I don't think he has. I think his letter kind of indicates that he's hoping that the town would do it because the cost would be high.
Yeah, there's something obviously wrong with that soil. I mean, you can leave, you can leave soil just lay there and grass will grow. For some reason, grass cannot grow there. And now, whether it's a type of soil or type of seed, whatever the case might be, I don't know. I always thought we sawed at those types of things, those situations.
It depends on the time of year. If it's, I'll say dampness in the spring or late fall, we can seed. But then again, if it's, if it's wet, sod's not available. So it all depends on the availability of sod. We certainly prefer to sod, but if sod's not available, we do seed.
Just, just one more.
Yep.
Is this unique to this area? Have we seen this in other parts of town other than Empire Street or Dominion Street?
I, I know that we've struggled finding top-quality topsoil over the years. I think we're getting a better product now. That's not to say that it didn't meet specifications before. But we are actively looking for a higher quality product over the last three, four years.
I'd be curious to see if Mr. Dunham did a test patch and with seed, and if that seed took, then it would be a little bit more of an indication of perhaps a faulty product at the time, because then you would know the soil was good. And if the seed didn't take, then we have a soil issue. But again, you're talking five, six, seven years ago.
Soil analysis? Like, we would have had that at the time, would we?
Well, it depends. I mean, at that time, and since work has been done more than once at the property, I can't even comment where that soil comes from. But, I mean, you can, you can do a sample now, but that's to say what the state is now, not what the state was. So soil runs out over time. So it's, I'm not sure what it would do potentially. Would tell them how to correct it or how to, how to approve or amend that soil to improve the, you know, the grass.
Councilor Graves?
The homeowner just up from the Dunhams uses a professional landscaping company and has been for years, and she has the same problem. I think there's also, I think Mr. Dunham also mentioned, there is another homeowner further down the hill who also uses a landscaping I think there's also, I think Mr. Dunham also mentioned, there is another homeowner further down the hill who also uses a landscaping company, who's had the same problem. So even the professionals can't do it. And as I say, when you go down Dominion Street, there is a definite line. There's that, you know, that, you know, four feet or three, you know, meter type thing where the town did the work. It's not in very good shape, but everything else up to the home, for the most part, is in good shape, you know, as well, as in good shape as lawns can be in Bridgewater nowadays.
Counselor McDonald?
Could we potentially speak to the landscapers and get their professional opinion on, you know, is this soil quality, is it, you know, what's going on in this area? If they can keep the rest of the lawn in good condition, what might need to happen to, to fix this? I'm, I'm sure if they knew what to do, they would have done it by now, unless the homeowners are saying, just hold off, we want to talk to the town about it. But maybe they have some, some expertise to add to the conversation, because if we did something wrong, we should rectify it. He's been asking us for quite some time. But, you know, if, if we don't know what to do about it, if we don't know what the solution is, there's, you know, we're just throwing good money at the bad.
That's up to council, what, what you wish to do with that. Can ask some questions of lawn care companies or suggest that Mr. Dunham do a soil test or, yeah?
I'm assuming the, that, that particular piece of his lawn was good prior to the work being done?
To the best I know, yes.
And, and, you know, certainly the pictures indicate that when the area was sodded, it looked really good. You know, it was consistent and it looked good.
I think when Mr. Dunham wrote, it wasn't, it was on, on behalf of him, but also on behalf of the other homes along that section of Dominion Street, so that six or seven other homeowners. On the south side. There doesn't seem to be as much of a problem apparently, or there's, I haven't heard any complaints on the north side. But there is, there's not many houses. I know that, you know, Engineering has talked to Mr. Dunham and obviously something should, in my opinion, I think something should be done. I, I understand that it may set a precedent for other things, but I haven't seen this in other parts of town, other road constructions. You know, Larry has indicated that four or five years ago, that the soil wasn't all that good, or at least in his opinion, and that they are trying to get a higher quality grade of, of topsoil. So it may have been at that time that there was a problem and it just.
So Larry, just to clarify, do we have, or is it common to get complaints about the quality of the, the grass or lawn after work's been done by the town? Just in terms of setting a precedent, is there something we need to worry about?
Normally, the concern is that the seed doesn't take the first time. We do sometimes go back the second time and encourage reseed and encourage the homeowner, you know, to add more water or whatever, to, I guess, to pay more attention or provide a little more maintenance to ensure it germinates. But as far as re-topsoiling, like, I can't recall off the top of my head of that happening in any, certainly not in any one area that involved multiple homes.
So the second visit usually took care of the, the issue or?
To my knowledge, yeah, I don't recall there being a repeat occurrence, I guess, at the same home.
David Mayor Tanner? Do we have access to topsoil right now? Like, today I could go out, you could go out and get a yard of it or two yards of it?
Do we, does the town have topsoil?
Yeah, like, today?
Yes.
We have a little stockpile of it somewhere?
Yes.
Okay, well, yeah.
I think it's incumbent upon us to fix it.
So the question then would be how? Is it delivering soil and seed? Is it tearing it up? Is it asking them to talk to their land care company? Is it, so?
I think it would probably have to be torn up to tell you who dug out, who started over.
And is it all six or just?
Which is, which is obviously going to be an expense considerable.
It's multiple lots that we're referring to.
That's what Mr. Mr. Dunham is referring to in the letter, that there's multiple homeowners. And as I say, he would have liked to have been here, all of them would have liked to have been here. They wanted to start this process back in March, just before the spring, but obviously the pandemic.
And the time of year for doing this wouldn't be right?
No.
Now?
You know?
Be fall or, or next spring?
Oh, yes.
September's your best time.
And, and to what level? Are you talking about sod? Are you talking about seed?
If you don't do seed, September's the best.
Lots of rain coming, apparently. It's saving it up. All the rains being saved up.
So, just in recapping the letter, it does indicate that one homeowner did actually at their own expense, dig up and then replace it with new sod. So I'm just aware of that. One actually has corrected it on their own and paid out of their pocket for the expense. Yeah.
This is a tough one.
Yeah.
It really is.
Yeah, it's hard for a few reasons. The timeline doesn't help, because it's been so long.
But as I say, Mr. Dunham has been having conversations with the town for a number of years about this and it just, nothing, it never went anywhere. It just never went. But he's still concerned and, and so are the other homeowners, I think.
I mean, I just, we have to be very careful, in my opinion, just because when we do construction work and we sod or seed, we're not going past every single day to make sure that somebody's also taking care of that. And I'm not suggesting that Mr. Dunham or his neighbors didn't take care of that. But I'm very aware of the door we might be opening and the precedent we might set. So if, if construction work happens in front of my house two years from now and the town comes and sods it and I decide never to put a sprinkler onto that and it dies, five years later, can I come to the town and say, I need new sod? So how do we put those checks and balances in place?
You could develop some type of, like Larry just referenced that, you know, we go out, we seed, if it doesn't take, we'll go out and do it one more time. So you could come up with some type of, of protocol that staff could follow.
Yeah.
And then, you know, after that, we're done. If it doesn't, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, for whatever the, the circumstances may be. Homeowner care or just soil conditions or time of year or whatever it may be. But if, if you kind of laid out this is, or this is how far we'll go.
Yeah.
It might provide clarity to the homeowners as well as, you know, staff in terms of what your expectations are. And then we can follow that and provide that to homeowners if they approach us with these types of.
Make it easier to budget too, because otherwise you could be facing unlimited asks to redo and redo and redo. Counselor Thorburn?
Yeah, I, I believe that, like most things, the homeowner has a responsibility as well. And like you said, you worship it. We can do everything that we can within our power, but if they don't do what they're supposed to do, then that's really not our fault. So you can't hold the town accountable. But I'd like to see this matter go back to staff and come up with a policy that we will do. And then it would be clear intent of what our policy would require and to solve this issue.
Counselor McDonald?
For me, what's a little bit different in this situation, I agree. I wouldn't want to see someone come five years later and say, you know, my, my grass didn't take. That's, that's pretty unreasonable. Mr. Dunham did follow up on this through, through over the last few years. So it, it's not just that he decided one day, I'm not, not pleased years later and I want this taken care of. There's also the fact that there's six homeowners involved in this. So to me, that says, you know, one homeowner may not have watered the grass enough. But six of them, including a couple who use professional companies, suggests to me that something is not right there. And I'd really like to find out what it is. If it's just that there's not enough topsoil, the quality was really poor, I would consider that on us. If it's something completely outside of that, you know, that there's, you know, some sort of pest or something in, in that area, then, then, you know, I don't, I don't think that would be on us. But I, I think it's worth looking into to find out what, what was the root cause. And if it was, you know, like I said, just too thin a layer of topsoil or something like that, then we need to rectify that.
So is the, is the better direction then to just take this back to staff and say, use your best judgment to come up with a, with a solution? Then, because it could be a layer of topsoil and seed, it, maybe it does need more?
I think at this point, that, that would be fine.
Yeah.
Just start.
To determine the root cause and.
And to come up with a salute, to work with the homeowners to come up with a solution.
I think that would be the next step.
Unless there's a, a big budget implication, I don't think we'd need to come back to council.
So you can authorize the work as long as it's reasonable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Larry, Larry has his budget.
In consultation with the homeowner.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Does that, does that work for you, Mr. Feener?
Yes.
Yeah. Does someone want to make that, need that as a motion? So it's, Counselor Graves, you want to make that motion? Seconded by Counselor Thorburn. You got that? Sandra? Thank you. Any further discussion?
Question?
Question being called, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. That was good, feels good to be back together. Our next item is smoke testing for the week of August 17th to 21st. And I believe Audrey's coming to explain that one so that council understands and the public understands. Because if not everyone knows what's happening, this could seem quite unusual.
Yes. All right. So this is part of our inflow infiltration study and it's been conducted by Design Point, our consultants. What their intention is, they'll come for a couple of days. It's weather dependent, so we've allotted the full week of August 17th to 21st, which is starting next Monday, if, if everyone agrees. And it is smoke testing. And smoke testing, although it sounds very ominous, it's actually like a fog. So we're going to inject a fog into the sanitary sewer system with the hope that it's a very non-intrusive way to find very small leaks in the system. So this would be infiltration from rainwater, from snow melt, that the average person wouldn't maybe even realize is on their property, around their property, and it's entering into our system. So we're not doing it all through town. We have a selected area, which we included with your council package. And if we're in agreement to move forward, we would post that map of the streets that will be affected on our website. We'll also let every resident in the area that will be in the tested area know about it, door-to-door campaign plus the website information. And for the average person, when we inject this fog into the sanitary system, it will be in the street. And the intention is it will basically penetrate through the sewer system, through the cracks. And if your house is tight interior and exterior, you will not see anything other than a little plume of smoke coming out your vent pipe in the roof. If there are leaks, you'll see a plume of smoke, depending on how large the leak is, maybe around the foundation, could be coming out your roof leader. There's a number of locations that it will come. Design Point and myself and one of our staff will be on the street. So if there's any concern from the resident, we will be tracking this. We will be photographing it as it's transpiring and folks can get in contact with us right away. They can also tell us ahead of time if they have any concerns. All of our numbers will be posted for the next week so that they could tell us if they have any issues that maybe they want checked into first or, or more information. So we'll be available to answer any of those type of questions as well. The streets that we're looking at, just so folks are aware, we would be looking at basically Jubilee Road and All Street, south of Jubilee to the town boundary. And another small section over near Greenwood Street and its surrounding neighborhood. So it's not a huge area. There'll be nothing on the east side of town. It'll be just here on the west side. What this does for the inflow infiltration program is it's very difficult to find these small leaks using any other technique. Cameras won't pick these leaks up nearly as effectively because they're very tiny. Some of them aren't even inside the pipes. Some of them are in the lawns themselves. We would have to look at cammering or excavation. And this is probably the most effective to find out how large a problem or small a problem we have in these areas. And I will note to you, the map that we provided with your package tonight has been updated ever so slightly to narrow in on a few areas. So there will be an updated map provided on the website.
Any questions? Counselor Graves?
Is, is the idea to have all of the west side done?
Not at this point. We're just going to look at the areas that we believe have the highest infiltration of this nature. We may expand out in time if we discover that the problem is a lot larger and maybe beyond these limits. But this is the largest part that we feel has this type of issue.
Counselor Thorburn?
I'd certainly contact Scotia Business, because the smoke starts coming up in the streets and the fire department will be paged out considerable. And let them know it's going hot.
Absolutely. We have the police fire in Scotia Business to notify.
But if Scotia Business is updated on to it, then when they get the call, they'll know what to do with it.
Yes.
Counselor Graves?
Will there be a time, will be, will the homeowners know a specific time or an approximate time so, so they can also be the, the eyes for the town of Bridgewater?
Yes, we can add the times into the, into the testing. Basically, we'd be during working hours, so it'll be basically eight to four. And our intent, it'll be Monday and Tuesday, as long as the weather cooperates, but we did leave the full week. But their notices will tell them and if they want updates, they can certainly contact us. And as we move along, we can give them specific times.
Yeah, good. So, yeah, so they can plan a day around that.
Absolutely, yes.
Other questions? It's kind of fascinating to me. I'd be interested to see the results. Okay. Our next item is appointment of Assistant Returning Officer. Obviously, we have a election coming up for CSAP Board and for municipal elections. So there's a motion there to appoint the CIO, Tammy Crowder, as Assistant Returning Officer. Someone prepared to make that motion? Counselor McDonald, I think, first?
For the Town Council, for the Town of Bridgewater, appoint Chief Administrative Officer Tammy Crowder as Assistant Returning Officer for the 2020 Municipal and C A P, sorry, C S A P Board Elections.
Thank you, seconded by Counselor Buret, any discussion?
I was just worried that her workload was a little light, so I'm glad to see this coming.
Yes, yes. Amanda's the boss on this one. Any other questions? All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Next item is the 2020, 2021 Capital Budget Monthly Review. So just to refresh the public, as we went through the pandemic, we wanted to make sure that there were checks and balances for budget items as we went through, in case something happened. Wave two or something that kind of derailed things, although we seem to be moving along pretty, pretty well. So those are there. I don't know if you wanted to review any of those?
They're just the two, really, the guardrail replacement program.
Yep.
And half-ton truck. The high school crosswalks is still deferred. We're still waiting for some, some update with respects to what the, the school there would like to see. That one is still kind of out there.
Yeah. Any questions on those? Just the two items, so pretty straightforward. Okay, no motion needed. The next item is the Energized Bridgewater Engagement and Communications Officer. So I think we'll turn it over to Ms. McDonald to run through that one.
Yes, so, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. As, so you have a report for information to, sorry, my glasses don't let me look and read at the same time. That to identify, I grabbed the wrong one with me, to identify that we, let you know that we've identified that there's been a resource need within the Energized Bridgewater Program. So we have an existing engagement plan that we've been working on that with the pandemic and the restrictions due to COVID is simply not possible anymore. And so we, we have, you know, it was planned for in the budget and everything else, but we, we really realized that our, our experience, our skill set and our expertise in engagement doesn't go far enough to address engaging deeply with the community around energy poverty in the age of mostly online and non-contact and non-face-to-face type of engagement and communications. So we set out to explore what all the options were, to figure out how to overcome this, because it's been identified already with Infrastructure Canada that it's one of the, the areas that's been impacted by the pandemic and we're at risk of not meeting our targets and not meeting our contractual obligations for the engagement side of the smart. for the engagement side of the Smart Cities Project if we don't have a new and revised sort of engagement plan. So we went to explore all the options and really the best value is to hire in-house and grow the specific skill set that we need. And the value isn't just about the dollar value. It's also about the level of effort, the quality of the work, the time and the consistency of the work. And really, there's a lot that's required over the next two years. Sort of, we have a lot of engagement front-end loaded as we try to get the, the project off the ground and tested and, and rolling. And so we are, are planning to hire a two-year term Engagement and Communications Person to, with the possibility to renew based on project needs at the end of the two-year term. But just to ensure that the strategy, brand, tone, skills, they're all strongly built for the Energized Bridgewater Project and to mitigate the issues that we've already identified that we are, we are behind on. And for example, you know, one of the projects, one of the, the consulting projects that we have on the go right now, there's an engagement component to it. And the skill set that they brought to the table initially wasn't good enough for what we needed. It's all based on our knowledge and how we engage pre-pandemic. And simply just putting a survey out or simply just, you know, putting something up online isn't always enough. And for the, the types of communities that we need to be addressing within Energized Bridgewater, we need, we need something, we need a little bit more than that. So it's fully covered within the budget. And so it's not, it's not a change. It's not taking away from anything else. And it really was looked at with all the options as being the best value for the project, for its eventual outcomes and for the, the dollar, the dollar value as well. So we could get, you know, we could bring in consulting expertise, but we'd be piecemealing it together. We'd be bringing people in who aren't committed and madly in love with Bridgewater or this project. They'd be flying in and flying out on different pieces. And to engage in the way that we, we need it to, to make the project a success, we really feel that having that skill set in-house for the first two years would, would make it much more simple for us to conduct the work that has to be conducted.
Other questions? Deputy Mayor?
So just to refresh my memory, what's the org chart look like there now? With this added position, how would it look? Sorry.
Good question. No. So Colleen is the project manager, director, project manager, and then the staff. So, and things are, are in the midst of some change as well because some of the, so this was not a position that we envisioned as an FTE within the organization when we submitted the application and when we brought you that org chart. So it's not on there. It was in the consulting category. You know, there'd be a host of, of different consultants that we'd be hiring for different aspects of the work. And that the, the positions would be, there's a sustainability planner and a portion, not 100%, but a portion of that, I think it's about 85%. The junior planner, and that's 75%. Then the, then there's a number of other positions that are all dubbed navigator positions. So a financial navigator and a technical navigator, and there's a certain number of FTEs. There's 1.5 technical, one financial. And then the household navigator role, I don't know if you recall, I'm going to do a bad job with my hands, but that role is, is envisioned as actually existing outside of the organization, but directly connected to the work. So I don't have the number off the top of my head, but this does replace consultants with an FTE. So, oh, and the IT, sorry, totally forgot, Andy. Sorry, Andy. The IT systems specialist position as well.
Does that help you?
Yeah, somewhat.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Just wondering if you could comment. When you said that consultants wouldn't, in the same way, be as in love with Bridgewater and the project, good on you for recognizing that that's when we get our best work. Our staff are those people and you guys are really great at finding those people. And, and it's really gone a long way for us here.
That's a good point. I think especially with that project.
Yeah.
You gotta kind of love it. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Next item is RFP 2020-04 Fire Hall Building Automation. So this is regarding the HVAC system efficiency and I see you're approaching the podium. It's hard to tell behind the mask. The goatee matches the mask.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got two masks on.
Do you want to just give us a quick brief overview for the public?
Yes. So staff issued the RFP for the supply and installation of the fire hall building automation system on June 17th with a closing date of July 16th. Ten packages were issued with the town receiving three submissions. The approved capital budget is $100,000. And our staff committee evaluated the proposals based on the five criteria outlined in the RFP and are recommending the award to the highest score proposal from Train Canada ULC in the amount of $51,924 net HST.
Any questions? Mr. Feener, Counselor McGinnis?
And the budget for that was $100,000?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Take the wins when you can get it. Counselor Graves?
Are there points awarded for local businesses, businesses within Lunenburg County?
Under a certain value, yeah. Based on, I don't believe this one would have hit that value given trade agreements. We can only put the local preference on per curiam under a dollar value.
I believe $25,000.
Twenty-five thousand.
Counselor Thorburn, yes, please?
I would move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater award RFP 2020-04 to Train Canada ULC for the supply and installation of the building automation system for the fire hall as proposed in the RFP submission dated July the 16th, 2020 at a total price of $57,258.50, including HST, $51,924 net HST.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor McDonald. Further discussion?
Question?
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Next item is the, the monthly report for July 2020, the Lunenburg County Senior Safety Program. I mean, again, I don't know what we would do without this program. Thank you to everyone who's reading the brown lunch, the United Ways, doing a lot of things and lots of people stepping up and helping.
Yeah, to bridge the little program.
Yeah, so I would always encourage the public to take a look at this report. And if they, if there's something that appeals to them and they can volunteer in some way to, to reach out. Business arising and unfinished business, we have, we gave notice at a previous meeting for this one. So Eco de la Riviera Sud request for funding revisited. So this would be to rescind the motion. So this was for an event that they requested money for that eventually they didn't need the money for. So someone prepared to make that motion?
It's your worship. I'll make a motion. The Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater rescind motion 20-124 approved on, at the June 22nd, 2020 council meeting. The Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater award a grant in the amount of $500 as per the request contained in document 20-120 to the Eco de la Riviera Sud as the town's contribution towards the graduation celebration recently held.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor McGinnis. Discussion? Ready for the question? All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Next is straightforward. It's a notice. So this will come back to the next council meeting, revision of policy 77 grants to organizations. Is someone prepared to make that motion? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater give notice pursuant to Section 48 of the Municipal Government Act that it's the September 14th, 2020 council meeting amendments to Policy 77 Grants to Organizations Program will be considered to streamline the application process, provide staff with authority to approve small grants and improve reporting and recognition as per the draft policy contained in Appendix A of Document 20-051B.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Fager. Straightforward. We'll discuss it at the next meeting. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Our next item is Regional Transit Service, the Citizens for Public Transit Report. So included here is essentially just for future discussion. We received a letter from Town of Lunenburg, from Mayor Bailey. So the Citizens for Public Transit Report arrived back in February. And according to the letter, Lunenburg Town Council requested a staff report, which was reviewed at their meeting in May. And so they essentially want to have a conversation, another conversation, I guess, about regional transit. So this is just here for our information at this point. I think our position has been clear from the get-go. We, we have public transit. I'll just step out and say, we couldn't wait anymore. So we have public transit and so I would certainly welcome, I think we all would, any conversation that has a transit system that links up with our transit system. But players need to be at the table. And I think we're not all at the table. So hopefully that discussion will take place. Are there any questions? No? All right. Very straightforward. Next item is the application for flying the LBG TQ plus-two Pride Flag for 2021. We had it flown proudly this year. Even with the pandemic, the Pride Flag was up. So, and if people haven't seen our stairs beside Town Hall, I would strongly encourage you. I was just trying to think where I was a couple of weeks ago and someone just out of the blue was talking about, like, not to me, I overheard them talking about the rainbow stairs in Bridgewater. Just a completely unrelated conversation. It just had a smile on my face. So it's just demonstrates a sense of inclusion in our community. Someone prepared to make that motion? Counselor Thorburn?
I would move that Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater approve the application for flying the Pride Flag as Policy 81, flag flying on the designated special purpose flag pole located shipyard landing from July 21 to 31, 2021.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Graves. Any discussion?
Question?
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. The final item is the Lunenburg County Remo Guide to Emergency Management for Elected Officials. So I'll just turn it over to CIO. She can just quickly explain why that's there.
So this was, this is being forwarded from Remo to the partner municipal units within Remo. It's for information as the roles are clearly defined already. And it's to make councilors aware of what their role is during an emergency or within the Remo organization itself. And so that, so that you can anticipate during an emergency, kind of, when you'd be contacted and your role in terms of providing information to the community or gathering information from the community and giving it to Remo. As I say, it's, it's for information. We're providing it to councilors now. We're kind of in hurricane season and, and this will provide some information for you on that if there is a, an emergency, kind of, where you fit within Remo. And it's also going to be provided to councilors after the election for the newly elected council as a resource, a piece of resource material for them as well.
Questions? I think this council has been very well versed when we've had a hurricane or emergency on, on the kind of the chain of command that comes from Remo down. So very important. I know, and I know both Tammy and Counselor Thorburn could speak to what happens when people don't know their role and they start meddling and people are too busy answering politicians' questions when they should be helping someone find shelter or something. So, perfect. That's all the items we have. We have an in-camera meeting right after this here. So no further ado. Have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Counselor Thorburn, seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. We are adjourned.